Good evening, we will call the school board meeting of Monday to order. Angela, did you call the roll?
Helen, here. McKean?
Here.
Pass?
Here.
Romanski?
Here.
Swanson?
Good evening.
Tucker?
Here.
And Bob?
Yes ma'am. All right, we're gonna start tonight with some good news. And cameras gotta move as I get up. I'm gonna have somebody join me up front. Phoebe, you wanna come up? Well, Coach too. So I've got some good news tonight. This is about one of our state level competitors. This is Phoebe Hessen.
Yes.
Phoebe Hessen. We actually had two state level competitors in this speech program. Bonia Bijou, I may not be pronouncing her name quite right.
It's Bonia Bijou, yeah.
Okay. Is unable to be with us tonight, but that was another state level competitor. We're very, very proud when we have our students perform so well and get to state level, absolutely outstanding. Actually tell me, does it say in my notes, what event was it you competed in?
I do original oratory, so I write and perform a 10-minute persuasive speech.
That you write yourself?
That I write myself, yeah.
Outstanding, all right. Well, we're gonna recognize you tonight. We have a certificate of appreciation for yourself and for your compadre. But we're very, very proud of you. And thank you for all that you do to represent our district. But why don't you tell us a little bit about, you're not gonna give the speech, I think that's a little bit too much to put on the spot tonight for that. But tell us a little bit about, well, that too. Tell us a little bit about your speeches, so we know what it was topically.
Basically, I did a speech about pessimism and the benefits of pessimism and how our society generally overlooks the benefits of pessimism.
You're preaching to the choir. What was the main thrust?
Basically, that pessimism can allow you to think about the things that could go wrong in a situation and be prepared for them, rather than just blindly hoping that the future will be good and that that can lead to better outcomes for people.
Hope is not a strategy.
Yeah, exactly.
Great, great. Well, thank you very much for what you did, represent our district, for all the hard work that you put in. So I've got a certificate, checkboard of recognition presents this to you, Phoebe, in recognition of your excellence at the state level. And we congratulate you and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then we'll give this one to your coach, so to pass along as well. Anthony, you'd like to say?
I guess I would just like to congratulate Phoebe as well. We have 19 seniors this year on our team that are graduating. Some of whom have been with me for two years and, Phoebe's been with me for two years, and to compete at the state level after only being in speech for two years is really quite an accomplishment. Bonia has been with me since she was in eighth grade, so she's been with me for five years. And Bonia will be competing at the national level tournament.
Wow.
In Salt Lake City.
Awesome.
And her category is what?
She performs in what's called POI, Program Oral Interpretation. And so it's several different inter- pieces cut and put together to create a performance piece that's socially, has a social commentary with it.
Let's give a hand to recognize.
Just a little bit this way, so you're not in front of that screen right there. Thank you.
Congratulations. I wanna highlight something else. Matthew going off script here, he didn't even know, but it's not on my script. But I wanna actually applaud the district and via the district, Rod. You know, we talked about some of these great things we're doing in the district, and it's nice when somebody else recognizes that. And Rod knows this, and so does the board, because he put out a note about this, but I wanted other people to be aware. We had another, and I won't name the district just for sake of anonymity, but another local, large metropolitan district sent a note to Rod saying, you know, "I've been watching you guys from afar and what you're doing with these career academies, and I wanna tell you how impressed I'm," paraphrasing accordingly, "but I wanna tell you how impressed I am. I think you're doing a great job, and can we come learn from you?" How many times have we been saying, there's times gonna happen when we're gonna do this stuff with the academies, CAPS, the high school innovations, and people are gonna come, wanna see us, wanna learn from us. We've already got that example happening locally, and it's really nice to check if we're a leader, and we're recognized as a leader now by our peers, in kind of a small way. But I think it's important to recognize and take pride in the kinds of things that we're doing, and we're already having our peers acknowledge it. So congratulations to the district, Rod. On behalf of the district, we thank you very much for this. All right, let's move on. Do we have any visitors tonight who would like to speak to the board? I see a lot of familiar faces out there, so I guess if not, all right. I'm looking for consideration of the agenda as presented, but I do have an addition, and everyone has that in front of them. We're gonna add two item, is it, we're adding an item or adding to an item?
Adding to.
We're adding to an item. 5.1.4, approval of non-certified contract, we're adding a couple of people, which again, we were notified about this, these are the excellence and equity specialists we're adding to, so just so you're aware, that would be part of the agenda that we're approving. So I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented inclusive of this item.
Someone?
Thank you, Mary, we have a second.
Second.
Matthew, is there any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented with this addition, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes. We have an agenda, let's move on to consent. We'll take a motion for consent as it's currently listed.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Angela, you have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on consent?
I would just like to make one comment. It's always sad to see people resign, but I wanna give a shout out to Jenna Meckler, who has taught my son the entry-level jazz through this last school year, and that's really meant a lot to him. So sad to see him go and make whatever he can.
Any additional comments? All right, we have a motion, all those in favor of accepting consent as presented, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion passes, we have consent. Rod, you just wanna go in order?
Yeah, I don't think we have any guests this evening, or we'd have to change that up, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask, I think it's, who's coming up? John?
John.
John, you wanna come up? We're gonna do item 6.1, which is the first reading of the series 700 policies. So we're gonna...
Come on.
I want you to go sit right there.
The rest of us have to sit in the middle.
Do we have something else?
Yeah. Let's move, let's move down, and Nancy, I'm on 6.2, 'cause I think...
All right, simmer down, John.
It felt good. We'll build the enthusiasm.
Cool, yes.
6.2, we're gonna move to 6.2, and we're gonna have Dale and Nancy come up. This is the, to discuss, we actually touched on this one before.
Yeah.
This is the late start schedule for professional development. Yep.
So at the learning session, we had a discussion with all of you about the possibilities of looking at adding late start schedule for professional development to the upcoming or upcoming calendars. And as, 'cause you asked us to go back and look at all possible alternatives, as Dale and I did that and talked with people like Bob Greeley and some of the transportation kinds of issues, and we talked to Dave Olowski and a few others, including Rod. We actually want to kinda amend our recommendation to delay late starts for one year. We would like to look at doing them beginning in the fall of 1718, for a two-year period to help with the very large transition that happens in the fall of 18. That would, that would come to complete our cycle of current calendars, and then we could look at it again when we do new calendars of fall of 2019. So what we have is basically an amended recommendation, a proposal. And we actually would like to come back with a more formal proposal that we would look at in the fall, because we're not going to recommend anything for this upcoming school year. So...
Discussion only.
This is discussion only, we're not looking for any kind of a vote. This is sort of giving you a heads up of what we're gonna probably come to with something more formally a little later. So if you look here, we explored the topic with you at the learning session, and you definitely said you were open to it. But as we looked at the possibilities of trying to add it for the upcoming school year, there was too many questions that kind of needed to be resolved and discussed. We do feel strongly that in the school year of 201718 and 1819, we are, we are having significant PD needs because across the district, Central may be having some changes. Pearson is gonna be a new elementary school. We've got a third of the staff changing at the middle level, with sixth grade going out to two different schools, and then ninth grade moving to the high school. So we do wanna come back later where we would take Reggie a formal vote on a two-year plan to add late starts for those two school years. But we wanted a little bit more time to vet the dates and work through some things with both community ed as well as with our principals before we come back with a formal proposal.
You guess that would be in the fall, we can come back in that.
We would come back in the fall. That way we can do a full, full-year notice to parents as well, that we're gonna do this for a two-year timeline. And then we would like to reassess at the end of that two-year timeline, because we'll have been through all the big transitions, and determine if we wanna keep it as a permanent add to our ongoing calendars after that.
I would guess that we'd have to do some of that evaluation maybe before full two years, because calendar obviously gets set relatively early.
We'd have at least a year under our...
Correct.
Yes.
So that would give us more...
Time to kinda look at. But we feel our needs are going to be very high, these two, the year prior to implementation of all the change and the year of. So that's why we feel, at least for that two-year span, we wanna see it added to the calendar.
I think that's the right move, to not do it this fall and do it the next year. I guess because there are some strong benefits and there is the need, is four gonna be sufficient next year?
Well, we had a lot of discussion about that. And maybe that's what we'd ask for some of your help. Part of our thought is maybe we need to also seek some input from community and parents as well. We debated back and forth, four to six. When we looked at what other districts around us were doing, there was a lot of fours. We also saw weekly and another, every other week, but for smaller increments of time. I think that's one of our questions too, is that we're not sure, is it four, is it five, is it six? I think four to us is the minimum for it to have a real impact.
Mary?
Talked with Darren at Solskwith Mitchell. We've been doing it for a couple of years.
And it goes over well there.
Yes.
Okay.
But like anything, you have to get used to it.
Yes. So that may be part of the discussion. Right now, we're thinking four, but we'd like to come back with something more formal, probably in August or September, after we have a little bit more time. Any questions?
Is there anything magical about Wednesdays versus like a Monday or Friday?
Not necessarily, although I think when you look around and when I was asking people, what are the typical dates that you, you know, checking with other districts, Wednesdays tend to be the day that most people use. So I didn't necessarily put a tremendous amount of thought into which day of the week it was. I was actually thinking a little bit more about where did it fall in terms of the other events on the calendar as I was... So these dates that I picked, I attempted to look at the calendars as much, we don't have fully developed calendars with all the building events and all that kinda stuff yet, but based on where parent teacher conferences, you know, is, based on where, the events that we do know, I tried to find spots that weren't right next to breaks, that, you know, spots that were kind of in between our profession, current professional development, so it actually served the purpose that we wanted to serve. And so these are kind of, we haven't had a chance to vet it with all of the different individuals. We do have feedback from most of them, and it looks like, you know, most of these would be viable dates for the majority, but that's part of what we wanna do is kind of, so no, I don't...
I don't have any objection to it, I'm just wondering if there's something magical about Wednesday.
No, I think, I think that's certainly something could be, we could look at a little bit more to see if there's a better, you know, better, better, a better date, but that's what seems to be difficult, a lot of people who went with this.
And then, you mentioned talking with community ed, and before you talked to a partner at the Y or something like that.
Yes.
Will waiting until the fall give us more time to have more of those conversations?
So Bob Greeley had reached out to YMCA, and they said they certainly do it for other districts, but they couldn't like give us a number in such a short turnaround of what that cost would be. And there was some transportation implications too. So we didn't really have time to vet that with Mike. You know, really with the learning session, what we were trying to do is find out sort of what was your interest or willingness to even look at it as an issue. And so, you know, we just felt like we needed more time before we could turn around a really good plan, so.
And I think part of our goal too is we wanna put you in the best position to be able to, you know, work with the community on it as well. And, you know, trying to do it, it feels kind of like the 12th hour, I suppose you could say, you know, 11th hour for sure, you know, if we were to try and do it for next year. So this gives you a chance to do it more, think it more thoroughly, I would find to help people understand why.
I applaud your discretion in this case. I think you're a lot of support to the concept. The questions we had, you could draft it by saying, "Let's, let's learn a little more, think a little more, plan a little more." So I applaud that. I appreciate you guys doing that. Any additional comments or questions on this?
So then we'll be back probably August, September with a more formal plan.
Yeah, and I wonder at that point, it may be presumptuous, but I wonder if we're gonna do that through the second...
Okay.
It's gonna be some iteration of this, we're just gonna nail it down, so I don't think we can go to improvement without it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, John, wants to come down? John?
Sure.
7.1, or no, excuse me, 6.1.
Nobody else lost? We're gonna go through the, continue our march through policies, we've taken a little time off, we're gonna start up with the 700 series.
March to the sea.
It feels like, we're gonna hit the 700 series, which is, there's about 18, 19 policies in there that are finance and transportation related. They're real exciting, but they are important to what we, what we do here in the district. So I'd like to present first reading of these policies. There's 15 of them that have changes, updates. These range from just legal reference changes, you know, small little changes, to a couple of them have large sections that are, are being adapted. So you'll see, you get a redlined version of that that has been sent out in the packet. So usually our practice has been now that we do a first reading, I present them here, you get the month to look at them. A lot of times Reggie and some of the people that are on the policy committee will ask for further clarification. Phoebe will, will pull together and answer any specific questions that people have. This group seems a little innocuous, not a lot of a hot, it's not a hot topic type of policy section. So, and a couple other clarifications there. There are three that we are removing. And the reason that we would remove policies that like we have in the past, a lot of them are contained in other policies that have been adopted, so it's like they're, they are going, their effect is going away, they're rolled into something else. And then there's one that is being changed, the policy, the fund balance policy, which was, there's a name change. We had the 715, it really should've been 714. We're removing one of our 715 policies because it has been made a procedure out there. So that's the gist of this group, so I would like to offer this up as a first reading and ask people to give me information or questions over the next few weeks if, if we need to sit down to clarify some things that, that are...
So I think this is about the third, fourth time we've done this now?
Yeah, we've gone through the 500, so this will be the sixth time we've done this, yes.
Okay, so a number of times. Probably too early unless anyone had a chance to look at it over the weekend on the board book, or any questions, but if you do have any comments or questions at this point, otherwise the direction of the board would be to take the time, review them, think about them. If you have questions, you can answer them, you can give it to the beyond, but the thought would be, what meeting?
We'd come back in our next, you know, within a month and do a second reading if we're...
Right, so is it the, so the next meeting, which is the June 13th meeting, would be the target? So that's just the board's aware, the idea would be to approve these, again, with any questions or comments we have. Okay? Anything at this time? I wanna applaud, John, I think you and maybe Sarah as well, I'm not sure, Angie, I'm not sure who, but this, I find this very, very helpful. And you've done this from the beginning, and I wanna say thank you. Having this cheat sheet, if you will, for benefit of the vision of watching, you know, there's a notebook that's on the desk of some of these folks, and it's thick and you have a lot to read. This really helps us summarize, we also give us the redline version, that's very helpful. So thank you for doing that, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Pass along, Sarah, 'cause she does the bulk of that, that we're grateful, so thank you.
Anything else on this topic? All right, we'll move on to, last item I think actually, 7.1. Mike, you wanna, Mike actually gets to come on down.
I can do it from there. I got people.
I think Angela's giving us some setup. So for the benefit of those watching, this is the approval of the 2016-17 preliminary budget, official budget.
Right, thank you for your time today. We'd just like to go through it, and you were given a little bit more detailed information in the budget package, and this PowerPoint, we'll just kinda go over the highlights. So we'll start with general fund revenue, and adjusted pupil units, or slowing down our growth, about 105 pupil units. 2% increase in the general education formula, that doesn't, there's no news that the governor or the legislature's gonna change that, so that seems like a pretty solid number. Changes to the special ed revenue, AdSIS grants and federal programs would be reflected in those programs. So later on, on the expenditures side, you'll see that we go up six and a half FTE and special ed, four in just general stuff, and those, there's some revenues that are attached to that, so it covers some of those things. And then we did have an increase in compensatory revenue this year. And again, talk about the inflation of the salary and changes that have been calculated at 3%. We've talked about that at our January and February and March meetings when we did a revised budget, that we were gonna, a revised budget and a long-range plan, we talked about increasing the inflation factor to 3%. No budget changes in teaching and learning. We're shifting some of the integration and achievement to federal programs, so we can add to FTE at the junior high level for excellence in equity staff. Staffing change, we have four discretionary staff that will be attached to the compensatory revenue that we saw increase, will, if, if we need to increase staff at some point, we would use those, that money. And then the six and a half special ed staff members that you approved at your last meeting because the revenues were balanced between state and federal. Ah, this is $35,000 yet, I think, in the end, but mostly balanced. Again, teaching and learning, nothing changed too much. We're still implementing the, the plan for teaching and learning. Food service, we're still trying to make progress to an average of 278, we're about 250 now, I think, on average, with a 10% increase. State, federal program requires you to be at the state average. Last year that was 270, now it's 278, because everybody's making progress to, to get to the average. So that would be the, the 10 cents would be added to the adult lunch and, or adult meals along with the full price paid for a student.
Puts us where right now?
I wanna say 245 and 265.
Yeah.
Might've been in the detail.
I didn't look.
Again, expenditures increased by 3%, and with the 100 student increase, there will be an increase in expenses in food. Transportation, because it's a general fund one, that's 6,067, number went up, was up 2%. Part of that's attributed to transportation. Contract increased by 2% last year, we had a two-year deal for 2% and 2%. And then maintain, we adjusted the activity bus schedule that we implemented in 1415, we adjusted that back slightly. I don't think we were going as late because we'd only have like two or three kids on it, so we did adjust that back to a little less service. Don't continue that, it seemed to be a bad... Community education revenue changes, again, could be an early challenge. The governor has asked to put more money on the grants available to pay for full-day paid preschool program for four-year-olds. The grants are, and the governor's proposal are kinda, our district would be a great, would be a good opportunity for our district, some of those grant dollars, the way they would fit our demographic. Again, we, last year we added a full-day four program, and we were kinda conflicted about one or two sections. We went to two sections this year, two sections, there's 36 slots, two, two sections, 18 each. For next year, we have 33 of the slots already filled. So last year at this time, we had half the slots filled.
So we have space and we want to add a couple of classes like this. That's a good point, Angela, is one of the things we've, we've philosophically said, if there's a need, we can figure out the space and the staffing. The board has always been supportive of me, especially at this age group, so we'd wanna make sure that if people see that. I like the idea of supply and demand, so everyone sign up, but also if there's extra need that comes over the summer, with move-ins or change of mind.
And again, that happened last year, we went from, we were only at about 16 or 18, and we got to what, in the end, about 24, 25.
We filled, I know, we filled them, they said that they...
Needed, yeah.
About they were filled.
And then the other programs in community education, we increased by 3%. Capital expenditure, we talked a little bit about this at last board meeting when you did a preliminary budget for us, but again, just, we'll see an increase in operating capital, the lease levy increased, capital projects, which is a technology levy, is 2.5 million out of the total, and the long-term maintenance revenue, and was an increase, you know, of revenue available to us for capital. We'll use the capital projects levy to put in the, we'll add some more DLC, digital learning coaches, some more staff to support.
Roll-up of the one-to-one.
The roll-up of the one-to-one, so we'll have 10th through 12th this year, getting some kinda back book in then...
Second grade.
Second grade as well. There's still one-to-two, aren't there?
That would be two, one, yeah, or two kits to one device.
For maintenance project, West Junior High Auditorium, and we have some money for building out any lease space. Building fund, when you look at the total, you see a small revenue number and a large expenditure number, and that's, we just got all the money in at the beginning, we just started spending it now. And the revenue number would reflect the interest income, and the expenditure, I think, was 48 million. We've got West Junior High roof replacement, bond field improvements, the early site baggage for the senior high has gone out. We will start paying for the senior high addition, that'll start having some expenses in September, October, I would assume. Furniture fixtures and equipment, there's some for the bond field, there's some for, you know, when we move into those other spaces, are we gonna need to have something ordered for next fall, as early as next fall? And some work on the south side. We start in the spring, that's still three months of, three months of budget.
Okay, next spring.
Next spring, yeah.
Right, right.
It's only summer now, right? Debt service reflects the new bond schedule, it's about $5 million increase because we sold the bonds, and the schedule did increase by about $5 million, both revenues and expenditures. And then, this is a new slide that you didn't have in the board packet that went out on Thursday. It is in the, it is in board book today. But it, it just kinda reflects, just reminding people where we were on revised budget last year, last spring, or two months ago, March. You know, I think general fund revenue is on tap, is in the, going in the right direction. Right now, our students have leveled out, and it would appear that we're going to be in the ballpark for, I don't, I wouldn't expect us to be too far above or below that. I wouldn't expect us to be too far above or below that, that 74, almost $75 million revenue for general fund. And the expenditures, I think were all right, but again, you know, most, most everything is in and it seems like, like we're tracking it on expenditures. I haven't changed this number to reflect any of those, this is the revised budget that we approved in March, so I haven't changed it, I think the revenue will be a little bit higher and expenses will be pretty much the same. And then, and the rest, I just wanted to kind of give you a, a general feeling of where we're going to be at this year's effect on the fund balance, just wanted to make that available again and I'll include that next, at the next board meeting in, in June where we will adopt the final budget. So we'll have that as a, as a reference point. And then you have these numbers, I still think revenue and expenditures, we still have some fine tuning to do and they might change a little bit due to where we have some people slotted in, but I think it's pretty close right now. Also, there's apparently for education, there's like 50 million across the state in the, in the legislature right now. They're spreading it out across a number of different things, but there's 50 million dollars across all the programs. So it won't have a big effect on any money for us, probably, but it may, so. It might change slightly on the revenue side. You see the big increase in capital, if we look back here, capital, the third line down, 7,180 in last, and this year it's only 4,055, that's the technology level and long-term maintenance revenue. And then again, if you looked at, you, building fund, 450,000 in revenue, 48 million in expense, we talked about that a little bit. Debt service, again, 19 million in expense and that's up from 14 million. So there's the totals, I don't put the building fund in the bottom line total because it could be different every year and so I, I don't include those totals. Merrick?
With the building fund, are we in danger of arbitrage?
No, no, we're only, arbitrage is if we have, make investments and they bring in, we used to have to think about this a lot more, but currently our, our arbitrage rate's about 2.3, 2.4 and we're only going to receive about 1% interest on our, on our bond. So the 2.3 being our expense is higher than our allowed, or the amount that we'll earn, so we won't have to worry about arbitrage. Other questions?
All right, Mike, I want to thank you for the level of detail, again, that is helpful, the narrative that you provide to explain a lot of this in the presentation. If there are no specific questions or individual questions, we're looking to approve the preliminary budget for 1617, so FY17, or next year I'm looking for a motion to do so.
Smooth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
Any other discussion? Pretty straightforward, unknown in this. All right, all those in favor of approving the fiscal 1617 preliminary budget, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Mike, thanks for the team. All right, we will move on and wrap this up, I don't think we have any new business. We'll do superintendent, assistant superintendent, anything, John, update from your desk? Okay, Rod?
No new updates.
Committee reports, do you have any committee reports? Tonight we had a, I'll jump in, tonight we had a finance committee meeting, really just kind of prep for what we just talked about, the preliminary budget, to see if there's any, from any perspective, questions and if it's as smooth as this. And then we had a meeting with our OPEP trust management team, just to get an update on the OPEP trust in terms of how it's performing, and some dialogue around our investment strategy. That's something the committee will make more of, probably bring back to the board in terms of any changes that we may or may not recommend for how that OPEP fund is being invested, which is very, again, it's important to note, it's a very nice investment that this district made. Barry will remember, we were on the district back in poll eight, I want to say it was, when we created this fund, pulled some money aside, knowing that this liability existed for the district, we set it aside and couldn't be tapped into, there was some concern at the time that the state could look too unfavorably at a nice balance and could tap into that or it would hurt us, so we set that money aside. It's now been growing quite nicely to fund future liabilities that will reach the taxes on our tax payers, so it's been a very smart move by our district. That's what that's about, we had an update on it tonight and we will probably come back to the board with just insight on that as well as perhaps recommendation on our investment strategy going forward. So that's the finance committee update, are there any others at this point? Okay, I'm going to go around the horn, we haven't done this for a while, but I'm going to start with Dave in the back, anything?
I'd like to say how much I enjoyed Mike, Nancy and Dale, first off.
Scott, you got anything?
Kids probably know that they're mostly done with their state testing now, and actually we finished math and reading last Friday and this Friday they'll be done with science testing, so if that was a conversation topic in your house, you'll have to find something new pretty soon.
Wow, great, thanks, Dave, Scott.
Just a reminder, June 3rd is the end of the year celebration, now communications is getting that out, they're emailing out to our staff today notifying who across the district will receive honors that evening. I, I hope you got that email, if not, Angela, can you make sure it got to the board? Some really, really good staff members will be honored that evening, so we're really looking forward to that. So please be there if you can, June 3rd, if you need tickets, let me know.
Nancy?
Just two things, one is we're heavy into planning for the third satellite for CAPS with our River South partners, which is Crystal Lake, Canterbury Downs, Ballet Fair and Renaissance Festival, so a lot of that is right in the weeds, planning right now, so we're excited about that. And also, Dave and I have been going through some MDE meetings about ESSA, which is the new reauthorization of the federal, what was No Child Left Behind Act, and there is more kind of uncertainty about assessment moving forward as well as a few other areas as well, so I think at some point when that becomes a little bit more clearer, we should probably have some discussion at learning session about that, so, kind of, some interesting things. There might, the state might do a waiver on assessments, so there's some interesting developments there.
Mike?
Just if you've been past Junior High West, you've seen some action on bond field. They're putting in storm sewer now and the turf, artificial turf will, has been ordered, so I hope the moratorium doesn't go through at the state level, but had some concern on that, but it appears to have gone past that. They have all the footings in for all the buildings and so the, we're moving along quite nicely right now. So storm sewer and water is next, I think, and they're just making pretty good time except when it rains like this, but.
Matt?
Nothing for me?
Okay, Gavin?
Nothing.
Mary? Sean?
Okay.
Shout out to all the recent arts and theater and music activities that have been going on across the district, Hamlet and all, District Jazz concert was a week ago and Junior High West and these chanters, all just, I feel like I've been to a billion different concerts and there's a billion more on the calendar, but a lot of talented kids in this district, so thanks for all the great work.
I just say, probably was obsessed, I went to the grand march and it was a lot of fun to see all these ladies and guys. So, and then I also got to go to the dance for a short time and it looked like it was a nice venue and stuff, so. You did a good job.
The Shockbeal alumni association had its annual gala and we've raised over $15,000 and the alumni association board is actively planning the big homecoming event, so please look forward to that, there'll be a lot of information coming out very shortly.
Hmm? Not personal either.
Sure, that kind of time.
Nancy?
Great.
Sarah? Sarah's walking in the room.
Yeah, fabulous concert, choir concert, Pearson's concert, that held at Wesley and a section of guitar players from the music production, I joined one of the sides, it was great.
Great, okay. So just to highlight our upcoming meetings and important dates, let me just highlight those here. We have still ongoing these elementary core and middle school core meetings, I won't read a lot of those off, but we have those coming up, we have a For the Next Generation game coming up next week. As was Moke noted, I forget who brought it up, but the, I think Scott did, somebody did. The annual recognition retirement celebration is June 3rd to acknowledge a lot of our staff. We have graduation, going to sneak up on us, that's June 11th. Our next board meeting is June 13th, so let's make sure that we all have that down. And then we've got several activities related to For the Next Generation, we've got core meetings again, school board retreat, the 27th, everybody takes note of the email tree, Sarah, kind of how we move things around a little bit. The 27th, July 11th, board meeting, some more planning activities and that's pretty well taken out through July. Any questions on any of that?
Yes, on the commencement.
Yeah.
Do we all meet there at certain time or where, is that detail going to be colored over too soon?
Yeah, you'll get, what's happened in the past, you'll get a packet of information mailed to you. Typically we provide with some access department information, make it a little easier for us if something could click and dash, I think typically we told to show up.
Five forty-five?
Yeah, I would say the 5:45 is maybe a little earlier than, but that's probably what we do sometimes, it's a lot of fun.
New members, new board members have to speak.
Yep.
At least 20 minutes.
No, in all seriousness, it's a lot of fun and you will get, I think usually staff sends that out to you like, yeah, but probably will be coming pretty soon, but I would suggest you plan on getting there at 5:45.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting tonight? We can stay.
It's a move.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, thank you. All those in favor, say if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.